I'm gonna move the minutes of September 9th with one edit that item 16 after letter F. It says, "Discussion, Selectman Wilson stated," and I distinctly remember not saying anything.
What did we say you said?
That would be maybe you were on the phone, right, Bruce?
Correct. It's just a typo. So I move the minutes with that change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 For second's comments, I'll defer to later. Public comment.
Tom, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everyone. I'm Diane Coyle, a little local in Pine Grove here in Madison. I'm a resident of the town for over forty years. And I have decorated your desk this evening with a piece of bamboo. This grew on my property. It's under four feet long. I never had an issue with bamboo before, but I know that it was on the property behind me. I have a little show and tell board for you so that you can understand better what this plant is like and what it does. There you go.
Thank you.
There are three kinds of bamboo. There's a black, there's a green, and there's a yellow. The one that we have in our community is this one. It is a yellow. And it can grow thirty-five feet tall. It can also grow through asphalt, and it can grow through concrete. And I couldn't get to my yard to really do any weeding this summer because obviously it was very hot and humid. And we've had a lot of rain. The heat and the moisture are just what this plant likes. It's a very moisture-seeking plant. And if we have a dry spell and it's on your property, it's gonna go to your septic tank. And people have had that happen. The state does not necessarily consider this an invasive plant. I beg to differ with them. Its reproduction rate is unbelievable. I have so much of it that it covers over an acre of property. I had an estimate to have it removed, dug out. You're talking over $2,000. Then, of course, you have to replace the soil and put new seed in and hope that it doesn't come again. The tip of this plant, if you don't mind here, it just doesn't...
We're gonna have bamboo growing in here.
Is a seed head. So this plant is getting ready to send more seeds into the air and onto somebody's property. Now, it's not just on my property. I did a little canvas of my neighborhood. It's on at least seven other properties. Also, if you were to take a ride down Warpers Road, you'll find this soft, green vegetation growing on the other side of the road. And these little stalks coming up that seem very innocent. They're the seed heads. I told Tom I looked into trying to find a way to kill this. There's really no chemical available which can kill this. If you have a field of it, cut it down and burn it, it will grow back. Part of the reason is the root system. They're very fine, hair-like roots. So first of all, it's impossible to get them all out of the ground. Secondly, not only does it grow, by the way, the perfect name for this is called running bamboo because that's what it does. The roots go out and new plants spread up. But also, I want to show you, it's on the board there, but you can see it better. But when it grows and it falls onto the ground, it actually sends out new roots. So it grows and spreads not only through the root system, but through the upper structure as well. This makes it really invasive. In doing my research, though, there is a harmless way that we can do this in. Turns out that bamboo grows in an acidic soil, which is typical Connecticut soil. So if you change it from acidic to alkaline, then bamboo cannot grow. And to prove my point, I did an experiment with a twelve-foot strip about two feet wide. Cut it down, put a heavy layer of granulated limestone on it. We are over three weeks since I did that, and not a piece of bamboo growing. So I bring that to your attention because if you don't address the bamboo growing alongside the road, next year it's gonna be four, five, six, seven, eight feet tall. And it can grow as high as thirty-five feet. So I don't think you wanna go there. And I don't think you want this coming up through the asphalt. It can grow through cement. I mean, this is a highly dangerous species of plant. Now, face to Noreen Cogruda, there is a state statute. However, I don't think the state statute goes quite far enough. This was done in 2013, I believe. I have a copy for you. And I highlighted a part of it because it talks about enforcement. And there's two points on it, lots of references to the statutes. I met with Noreen, and we discussed this, and she was going to have someone from an agricultural association or something call me about it. I'd never heard from them. It's really irrelevant at this point because the answer is the granulated limestone. And that's a harmless thing for us humans. So that's the point I wanted to bring across to you. I mean, I have not been able to get all of it under control. There's just too much of it, but I'm working on it. Just so you know, I have used 240 pounds of this granulated limestone, and I've only covered one half of my front yard. Now, I have the other half and a full backyard to do, plus the perimeter. So I'm gonna be working at this for a long time, trying to get this under control on my property. But I'm saying this to you because I really think you need to look at our roots, look at the danger that they're in from this plant, and decide what you're gonna do about it. Personally, I don't know that the people on the property behind me, they have a pond, so they have wetland areas. I don't know how much bamboo is back there. I can only see it in the wintertime. But I think when we have places where bamboo has been planted on property and not planted the way it's supposed to be, so it's contained to keep it from spreading, you need to address that issue. But I'll tell you this, even if they did contain it, bamboo is a grass genus plant. It sends up seeds at the top. So if it grows, it's gonna throw seeds all over the place anyhow. But I think we had the right conditions this summer for this. We had a lot of heat, and we had a lot of rain. And I think that's why we have all this bamboo this year. Twenty-three years on the same property, twenty-two years with none of this, and this year. So now, the risk is, if the people behind me don't get the bamboo under control, what's gonna happen is those seeds from their plants, when we have an Easter landing, are gonna come on my property and the surrounding properties, and we'll be back in the same boat next spring. So I'm asking you to consider the seriousness of this situation, especially consider the fact that it's a threat to the town roads. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You don't normally do that in public comment, but I think this one's a little bit different.
If you have questions.
Can we share the rules? So when you were researching, did you discover other property owners or even townships that have successfully used the line?
My brother used it in New Jersey.
On a bigger scale?
On a bigger scale. He had a business property he was selling. There was bamboo on it, and this is what he did. You can check on the internet. You won't find this information there, believe it or not. I've done a lot of research.
Interesting. And is it the same line that you go to the garden store?
You buy it at the hardware store, yeah.
And you put it in your spreader and to do your lawn, right?
Right. Same thing. Same thing. The key to this was discovering that this plant likes acidic soil. Change the pH, and it's gone. So it's not that difficult. But we need to get a handle on this before it does us in. That's all I'm saying.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Tom Hanson, 120 Princess Drive. I should've brought this up last month, but no, we should. I just wanted to pass along these comments. In August, my family held a big family reunion. We used the Surf Club building and deck and had a lot of people from out of state, like fifty-five people, all from out of state. And it was fabulous. The Surf Club was all ready for us. They did a great job over at Park and Rec. We talked to them a lot beforehand, what we wanted and how we wanted it set up. No issues at all. We had a terrific weekend weather-wise. That didn't hurt. But just to let you know, almost every single person that came just said, "What a fabulous town. What a beautiful main street. What a great beach." And, you know, I just wanted to pass that along to you. And I've already talked to Scott over at Park and Rec, Beach and Rec, to let him know how enjoyable it was. So kudos to everybody involved. It was a great summer. We had a great reunion, and just wanted to pass that along.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Item number five is updated from the Town Energy Officialty Commission, but he's not able to be here tonight, so we'll table that. Number six, discuss and take action to appoint membership to the Coastal Resiliency Commission. Motion?
Uh, some vote.
I'll second that.
Okay. So Al and I met with eighteen or nineteen people, I guess, to put, actually, Al and I and Dave Anderson, town planner, did. And we kind of started out with a core group that we thought was good to build off of. We brought them in and asked them to help us flesh out what we determined was gonna be an executive committee. Because with all the people that we spoke to, we had two candidates. They were very knowledgeable. They were all from different kind of areas of expertise. And so as we progressed through the interviews, we realized we didn't wanna lose these people. And we figured that the best way to do it is make the committee itself an executive committee, which would be the six people that we originally chose, plus Dave Anderson. And then invite the other people to be on subcommittees of different, three different types: communications, policy and finance, and technical. And so our executive committee, two of each fit into those categories. And the subcommittee members have indicated interest that they would like to participate in the same thing. So I'd like to just read off the names of the executive committee. We'd like to appoint Mary Barnaby, Dave Clark, Graham Curtis, Hank McGuire, Woody Weiss, and Walter Walsh. So I'd like a motion to appoint those to membership on the Coastal Resilience Commission.
Some vote?
Some vote.
I'd like to second Tom, and I think we should add Dave Anderson's name because I think technically we are appointing him as a commissioner, town planner. So I think we're naming seven people.
Right. Okay. So as amended, we conclude Dave Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Just to let you know who the subcommittee members are that have agreed to come on: April Allen, Tim Casey, Tony Duena, Bill Gladstone, Joe Mako, Fred Moore, Clayton Patterson, Wayne Rigney, Marilyn Shaw, Rob Sonnixon, and Blaine Strangland. So I think it's Strangland, actually. So just to put those in the record. I have a couple of corrections on the spelling of a couple of people's names, but...
And Tom, I think we're officially appointing them not as commissioners, but as committee members. So I think we shouldn't take an action.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to...
Some vote.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is Tom, is the expectation that the subcommittee members will be meeting as frequently and attend all of the dinner meetings?
No. Well, the expectation that we kinda had, talking to them, is that they would do their work separately and report back to the commission. Because they're gonna be broken into... This is all up to the commission to decide. We had this idea. They seemed to agree with it. Once they get together and they start actually doing things, things could be altered a little bit. But, you know, it'll still stay within the charge that's been assigned to them.
Scott, this is Al. We thought that they might decide to get started with the executive commission meeting monthly, the subcommittee meeting as needed. It might be more frequently or less frequently. And then perhaps quarterly, all eighteen of them would be together so that there would be a lot of cross-pollination. I think we further have suggested to the executive commission that they let people self-select as to which of the subcommittees they wish to be on. While Tom and I and Dave Anderson sort of lumped people into buckets based on their skill sets, we thought it'd be better if all the committee members decided themselves who was going to sort out on which committee. Furthermore, the executive committee commission members will serve as chairs of the subcommittee so that there's a lot of integration mechanism built into this model. And there should be a lot of cross-pollination and pulling together here.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the town creating a membership with HJAC Buy to conduct cooperative purchasing services. Some vote?
Second.
So similar to Sourcewell and a couple of other purchasing consortiums that we belong to, this is an association that will basically give us best, you know, they go out to bid on things, and then we get to take advantage of the best pricing on different kinds of products.
Tom, I'm very much in favor of this. Group purchasing consortiums can really make a difference in pricing. It looks like this outfit could be very helpful on lease purchase purchase. So I'm very glad to see us get involved in this.
Is this organization just for specific product product or is it, it would end up competing with Sourcewell and others?
I don't think it's a matter of competing. I think it's a matter of having more sources to choose from for different products. You know, so we could go to Sourcewell and find something at a certain price and maybe go to HJAC Buy and find a better deal. So...
Scott, we would shop the various group purchasing consortiums to see who's got the best arrangement.
Yeah.
They're not mutually exclusive.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Number eight, discuss and take action to approve a resolution to enter a lease purchase agreement with government capital corporation for the purpose of financing a 2020 Ford F-550 for the Beach and Rec partner and to authorize the first settlement to sign the same. This is part of the CIP. So some vote?
Second.
Discussion?
What, can you just maybe clarify what this is? I'm not sure.
It's a truck, a Ford F-550 truck, like a dump truck. Small dump.
I mean, I heard you say it was budgeted up with CIP?
Yes.
Okay. I don't remember talking about a truck. What's it called?
I think it was wrapped up in all of the other equipment strategy. And this is a lease, right? So we've got a big conversation going around moving away from buying to leasing and then allowing that to...
Right.
To have us refresh our fleet more quickly. Well, more timely, right? We're still gonna use the equipment through its useful life, but we're not gonna drive it until the wheels fall off and we're scrambling because it won't pass the safety inspection.
Stacy, you want to see?
Yeah, this was, I don't know if you can hear me. This was part, the one vehicle that was due to be replaced this fiscal year. We actually budgeted a lease payment for fourteen-five. This came in at just under $12,000 a year. We did try to get three quotes on interest rates, and the second closest was 6.7 compared to this three points...
Three plus that five, did I say?
Yeah. And then two other vendors were not even willing to give us an interest rate quotation for a municipal lease.
Well, you're going this one property, Stacy? Going this through?
This is through government capital. We've used them before. They're wonderful. They understand the whole municipal world as far as registering vehicles. This is, we've used them. This is part of the plan, and it's nothing out of the norm. But we did try to get three other quotes, and only one came in almost double.
Why do you think that is, Stacy? I would've thought this would've been a highly competitive market.
Because it's a small amount. Yeah, they want, they want larger leases.
They want multiple trucks.
Yes. Yeah, like a fleet. Yeah, and as you all recall, we kinda put a hiatus on replenishing our fleet right now until we move forward with other options. But right now, this one was definitely in the plan, in the CIP, for fourteen-five a year. And this came in at eleven... Sorry. Eleven thousand. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, am I allowed to ask a question? No? It's just really quick with the fleet. I just, is this like regular, like trucks that you're using to like move sand and stuff? Or like your trucks that you're using in town or plow?
Blue vehicle.
Oh, yeah. It's a new show. You know what? I can't sit back and listen to all this stuff and not show up. So I'm just curious, because I know you guys are regulars, and I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, actually, it's not appropriate for you to...
Okay, that's why. You can tell. It's fine. I'll write it down in length.
But if we happen to spontaneously start talking amongst ourselves, then...
I didn't know what kind of truck it was.
So we're talking generally about the fleet of trucks that spans all of our working trucks. So it could be, not right now, but it could be up to a big plow truck...
That's why.
All the way down to a police car as a strategy. We happen to be talking about a rather large dump body.
Correct.
Pickup truck.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Discuss alcohol banned at all Surf Club sports events. I think it's been mischaracterized a little bit. I'd just like to explain what the situation actually is. Beach and Rec policy is that there's no alcohol allowed anywhere except on Garden Point between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And so if you wanna use alcohol on Garden Point between Labor Day and Memorial Day, you have to get a permit. Okay? At the first football game, we had a huge crowd. Apparently, a lot of people were tailgating in the parking lot. And there were some incidents of where the police had to get involved. So...
And adults or just adults or...
Adults, yes. And so we met with the superintendent, with the director of Beach and Rec, with the police chief. We talked about the situation and what we should do. And Scott reminded us that alcohol is not allowed. So we're not banning it. It's been banned. This is nothing new. We're just enforcing it now. So at the last game, we had a number of police there who were, you know, helping to do crowd control and to make sure that, you know, we were enforcing our alcohol rules. One of the things I think we need to understand going forward is that the police are gonna stay involved at our sporting events. These are school events. These are not, you know, this is not the Giants playing the Patriots. This is a high school event. And so it shouldn't be, I don't think it should be, you know, that kind of partying going on. But the police are also gonna be checking backpacks because they think the crowd, the size of the crowds that we're getting this year, especially for football, it's just a wise idea to check and make sure people aren't bringing stuff in that they shouldn't bring in.
Add the date, yeah, Tom?
Yes, yep. Yeah.
Tom, do the police have all the authorities they need to enforce this?
Yep. And last Friday night went off very well. We had a lot of cooperation from people, you know, a lot of enforcement from the police. And, you know, I think everything went well.
Are you sure that why it was different? I mean, this is, I mean, it was just early season and people getting excited to get out there and tailgate. I mean...
Our, the first game, the first game against Notre Dame was the largest game we've ever had. So we had a huge crowd. People were parking downtown at CVS to get to the game.
Wow.
Yeah, so, you know, are we gonna see that size crowd again? Yeah, we may, depending on how the season goes. But we just wanna be prepared for it. Anybody? Anything? Okay.
Please, please don't bring alcohol to school events.
Yeah, great.
So Tom, your announcement was a reminder...
Correct.
...to the community that we have a ban.
Am I correct in recalling that it said something about proclamation, though? I think that's where people are getting confused.
No. I don't, I don't know what you mean.
I thought it said, I thought there were words in there that said something about proclamation.
Scott, are you thinking of the newspaper article?
Yeah, maybe they just got the word they chose.
They might've picked something up, but, yeah, there's no proclamation. Okay, number 10, discuss solar carports, RFP, and take action on next steps. So in summary, we received two responses to our RFP for solar carports for Hobart-Paulson. The two were fairly different, but the biggest difference was in the pricing. I think we found something that we could dislike about both of them. And so we heard from both of the people who responded that they would do this and they could do that. And we started getting into a gray area because with an RFP, I don't think we can negotiate until we've awarded the contract. And so we had an executive session last week to discuss this. We talked about some possible alternatives that we could look at. And I'll summarize what I think our three choices are at this point. We could throw the RFP out and start all over again. We can accept them just the way, you know, take them at face value and just the way they are. Or we can give each company a last and best chance, a chance to give us their last and best offer.
Two, Tom. I think there was a board which was re-RFP, too, right?
That's what I said first.
And they didn't throw out, like, not do?
Start over again.
Got it.
Yeah. So I think because they've each seen the other proposal, I'm very much in favor of having them give us their last and best offer.
So I agree with you, Tom, and I don't know if it helps our discussion at all, but I'll actually make a motion for us to discuss that we resend the RFP, the one that we had reviewed by town council, and request from both parties their final and best offer.
I second that.
So I think, in hearing about how this process went, it seems to be the fairest option...
For both.
For both bidders. It avoids us resetting the clock and having to start over again, which I would be okay with, but I don't see a big need to do it that way.
And we do have a timing issue. If we start it all over again. Yeah, when I came to you two weeks ago, I said if we, you know, drag it out much more than a week or two, you know, we're gonna jeopardize the project. And it has to do with economics. It means if we don't get the tax break, if we don't start by the end of the year...
Right. And to be precise, the current tax break that we're eligible for is a 30% reimbursement.
Right.
And it steps down to 26%.
Those details I'm not comfortable with, but I know that it ends on the 30th.
Okay, so I... It steps down, yeah.
Yes, it steps down.
I know it changes. And the intent of this project was to have it started and commenced by the first. And if we wanna change that, we should discuss that and look into that. And then the other one is July 1st to be completed by, you know, construction during...
Can I ask you a question, Tom?
Sure.
So maybe this is for Billy or Stacy. I'm not sure who the right person is. But who actually paid the performance assurance bond on the DREC? Do we know?
Yes, we do know.
Who was it?
I paid it out of one of the utility accounts.
So the town did? Okay.
So the town did, yes.
Well, the town defaulted, right?
Oh, well, which one are you talking about? The one that we did four years ago?
Carports. No, the solar carports.
Yes, the solar carports is the one we just applied for this summer. Yes.
And are there certain defaults, Billy, where we lose that application?
Yes.
Help us with the timeline.
What date?
The timeline is, well, the economics is for the tax benefit is the beginning of the first of the year. And then the ZREC, if we don't finish by July 1st, then it costs more because we start getting that benefit. And then I think it's another year. If we don't complete by another year, we forfeit the bond and the money. We have two of them. Each one was under $800. So it's not really the dollar amount per se, although $800 for each one is a lot of money. It's really the fact if we default again, because we had a problem on the first one four or so years ago. I can't remember the dates. You know, it's sort of goodwill that we probably won't be able to do, you know, I'm assuming that if we default for the second time, that would, our faith up there with the state would be a little bit tough.
Is that your back $800 sort of standard law?
Yes, it's a percentage of the...
Yes, it's a percentage of the value of the, of the project.
Okay.
I, I don't disagree with your motions. I, I...
We don't go into seconds, so we really should...
I second that.
Okay.
Um, I, I wonder if there's some additional information we might want to ask for as we go back and ask for the last best offer. Last, last and best, is that what you call it?
Yeah, no, if you can think of something.
I, I would find it helpful to understand the sort of lifetime cost and savings of this because we're talking about a two-decade or more scheme here. And so, I want to make sure that we're doing the best thing for Madison by looking at not just an initial cost or a variable cost that could change over time. I, I want to make sure we take the longest possible view of this.
Wasn't that scheduled in the proposal?
The cost of the project, yes.
Well, it, it's not so much the cost that interests us, it's the, it's the payback schedule.
Right, yeah, yes.
Right, but that, I thought I saw that in, in the...
Both of them had it in the proposal, so, yeah. So, that, that will be a part of, obviously, that will be what we're looking for again. It'll just be with...
That's good because I, I think we didn't get into looking at the proposals that much here at this table. But I want to make sure I understand what criteria we're going to use to evaluate the last and best and to see which one is best for the town of Madison. I want to make sure we, we're looking at the right metrics as to how to evaluate this. And it, it may involve several metrics.
Yeah, so, when, when, once the proposals come back, Billy will do an analysis of it, right?
I thought the Board of Selectmen were going to review the...
We're going to review it, but you're going to do an analysis for us to...
Are you setting criteria?
But we're going to, but we're going to make the recommendation ourselves. So, where, I think the difference is, we're not going to rely on the committee for the recommendation.
And you're going to take over.
That we're going to take over, right.
That's fine. So, you're going to add to the RFP requirements? Is that's what Al's getting to or are you going to use the same RFP?
Use the same RFP.
I think we may.
No, I, we need to talk about it now because, I mean, if we start changing the RFP, that's going to have time issues.
And you got to talk about that and you got to talk about the timeframe and then when you're going to review them and then what are you going to do with that information? You're going to get together, you know, you're going to push it back. You know, let's be realistic. How much time are you going to give them? What criteria are you going to ask them for? When are you going to review it? And then, when are you going to make your selection? Are you going to interview them again? So, those things all take time.
So, I think the fact that, that they both have responded to the RFP.
Right.
And all they need to do is look it over and finish it off with their last and best offer means that we don't have to take a lot of time. We don't have to give them three weeks. We can give them probably a week to do that and come back to us.
And, and what extra, what are you asking them for? Economics, a dollar, you're seeing if they give their price, their fixed price? One was 11.4 and the other one was 10.4. So, you're really asking them to see if they can tighten up that dollar or not?
Well, I think we're asking them for their last and best, right?
For their dollar.
And however they wanted, however they wanted to interpret that.
The last, last investing include ownership of the equipment too, Bill.
Yeah, there were, there were a few things that were different about the, the two different responses. And so, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that when it comes back, we'll have a clear view.
On the cost?
On the whole package.
And then, I think to maybe to broaden on Al's thought of, of the criteria, the, the drive to do this is not primarily economic. Because I think we look at the numbers and be pretty underwhelmed by the numbers. The drive to do this is really to, to continue to follow through on a larger energy efficiency, energy independence initiative that was started a long time ago. So, our evaluation is not going to be solely economically driven, at least as I evaluate it.
I mean, if we, if we compare it with existing rates, we may find out that it's not as good as our existing rates or we may, we may find out it is. But I think the, one of the reasons for doing this is to, you know, have our own source of power into the future so we're not reliant on, you know, the electrical. The electric rates could go up dramatically.
Right.
Hey, you guys, it's a comment from, from San Francisco here. So, just, I guess I'm, I'm struggling with this conversation a little bit because I, I, and I've talked to you guys, a couple of you guys about this, but I sort of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse here a little bit. That, that we're, we're jumping to a solution of we need a carport and we're doing it for green energy, which I think we all can nod our heads and say this is the right answer. But I feel like we've really never had the conversation about, you know, what is the, what is the expected result? What is the, you know, what is the, what is the need for this particular location? And what is the impact on students and the school and the, and I know some of the Board of Ed conversations have had that, but we at the Board of Selectment table, I really never talked about any of this stuff whatsoever. It was just presented to us very simply as we didn't decide on a vendor, which I'm, I'm still slightly uncomfortable with. So, I guess, I, I, I would hope that we would as, you know, policymakers and, and this being such a big public investment, we would consider thinking about public involvement or maybe even the Board of Finance as a, a suggested next step here. But I think, it sort of feels like we're, we're, we haven't started with the beginning in mind. We're starting with the end in mind.
Well, I'd like to point out that since 2010, you've already gone down the solar project. You know, you've been doing this for a little while. The, the most heavily...
I, I hear that, Billy, but in the absence of a plan in front of me, I, I don't know what's next. I don't know what's coming to us. And I don't know what, what is in the context of the bigger picture in terms of, you know, overall energy savings in the town? How does this look? What is, well, how does this project weave into other projects that the schools are doing, that the town is doing relative to solar? So, it, it does feel like a process project in isolation to me.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think it is. I think we talked about this before where based on what the Green Bank offers and what the, what the incentives are, we have to be opportunistic about this. And that, that's, that's how we got into this situation in the first place. We had, we had thought we could put a big array on top of the roof and then found out that the roof warranty would have been voided if we had done that.
That is correct.
Okay, so...
Or the cost to make the roof whole was not worth the economics of the solar.
Right.
So, if you don't mind, I'll jump in.
You're going to...
Because the high school is our biggest energy user. It's a 200,000 square foot building. It uses a ton of energy. So, you know, that's where all our energy use is. That and then Paulson's the next one and then Brown School's the next. And then, out of our town facilities, the police department, senior center, but they're significantly smaller. So, you know, that's where we're spending all our time and energy to see what we can do to reduce the cost and green energy at those bigger facilities. So, the roof situation didn't work out. So, what other situation could we do? We could do the carports. And that's, you know, that, you know, I guess because I've been involved with it for many years, it's just second nature to me. And that's what this town philosophy has been. And I thought the Board of Selectmen were on board and I, you know...
But I honestly, and that, that's very, very helpful context, Billy. But at the end of the day, like, I don't think as a Board of Selectmen, we never discussed, you know, that roof issue as an example. I, I didn't even know that was happening. We've never formally had a discussion about that. So, you know, in fairness to us, bringing, bringing the, you know, the solar carports to the table, we're, I'm seeing it as a vendor selection as opposed to a conversation about should we even do it?
Yeah, and I'm sorry because, you know, it was two selectments ago, two boards. I mean, Tom was in the first selectman. It was Fillmore. So, we, you know, we've been doing this since Fillmore. And so, therefore, it gets sort of lost in the shuffle because we've been doing it for so many years. We don't keep it, bring it back up on the table. But, you know, the, the other thing that we're trying to, you know, address is, you know, the demand. The demand number is, is the big number and that's what really costs us the most. And we struggle with that all the time. So, we, you know, I work with the Energy Committee and trying to come up with what we, what, what we can do to make the best return for our investments. Solar is one of them. You know, we, we, we just approved under the CIP geothermal at this facility. You know, I think that we know that it costs more, but it's a, you know, longer-term benefit. It's, you know, bigger, bigger investment, long-term, you know, payback and it's green energy. We're, we're talking about doing some stuff at the schools. The Paulson School has some big infrastructure coming, you know? We're going to look at that too. So, what can we do to make green energy? So, those are all things that we're doing all the time. And when we can try to get one in that makes sense, that we can fit in, the schools, you know, we go, we move forward. You know, I'm not, I don't like time-sensitive ones. I don't like pushing it myself. The schools and the impact on the schools is the most important. That's why I brought it to the school the most because I wanted to make sure they were comfortable with it and that we could get it done. That's why I started with a small one. If we tried to do a big-size one, I'm, I was concerned about the impact of the school. So, you know, I, I think it's a positive thing, but, you know, we can buy energy and not impact the school and keep going the way we're going too, so...
What I hear, Scott, asking is, is this worth doing? We've done solar panels before. We've never put them on stilts in a parking lot.
That is correct.
This is what's new. So, Billy, in this case, if I, if I, if I heard you correctly, the town may not save any money on this because we're still buying the energy and we're buying it, as I understand it, somewhat close to market rate, maybe slightly less. And then, 20 years down the road, we suddenly do own this equipment.
That's right.
But there may be some capital investment needed at that point in time because you were trying to educate us as to what might have to be changed out after 20 years. I, I'm trying to make sure that, that the town is going to benefit from this. And that's why I think I was trying to look at the long-term economics to make sure. I appreciate the saving energy part.
Right.
I don't want to wind up suddenly with, with the taxpayers footing a bill in terms of dollars that was far more than we had contemplated. And so, that's why I'm interested in the life cycle costing of this project, not just the kilowatt rate. I understand the kilowatt rate is an important metric.
Right.
But I'm trying to understand the life cycle cost, especially what happens at the 20-year mark.
Well, Al, there's different philosophies on some of the stuff. We're talking a 20-year prediction, you know, on what you think is going to happen.
Yeah.
So, you know, I've been around long enough to know when, when Barrow was 110 and someone said it's going to go to 50, I never believed that it would happen. In my lifetime, it did. So, you're projecting about what you think is the right thing to do. And I thought the Board of Selectmen had already made that decision. They wanted to do solar. They believe in the green energy. They wanted to reduce our admissions and that they're taking their capital. The Board, the Board has already decided that, that we want to do green and that we're taking our capital and we believe in the long-term future. Now, people will disagree with me. Someone at the last meeting did say that I thought I played the money down and that I thought the economics impact was pretty much neutral at first and that the long-term investment was a big positive. That's a projection based on information I've gotten from other experts and opinions that I've gotten and then I made my own guess. But you're, you're, you're making it an objective decision based on projections, energy costs. You know, the demand, if the solar actually helps the demand, which no one will predict it will, it will reduce it significantly. So, that's, that's an interesting topic, you know? And so, you're not going to get those hard numbers. This isn't an accounting number where you add the numbers up and you do a depreciation and you find out what the actual cost is. That's a theoretical number. So, I thought we've already made those kind of decisions and that these two companies gave us proposals and that there are prices. One was cheaper than the other. You know, you can analyze them to death, I think, but you can decide which one do you want to go with. I thought the cheaper one was the better one to go with myself personally and the committee did as well. But if you guys aren't comfortable with it, that's fine. You're the Board of Selectmen. You should be comfortable with it and we should recheck it and make sure because this is a 20-year commitment.
Well, it's a 20-year commitment and it, and it's also, you know, I think a, you know, putting, putting solar panels on a roof is one thing, but this is in public space. You know, and, and not to mention school property and, and student space where, you know, I'm just thinking of my own child backing in and out of those parking spaces and potentially hitting up, hitting up, you know, a metal pole or, you know, how do we, how do we snowplow in and out of those parking spaces? Does it impact on services? Is disruption to putting them up going to be significant? I, I guess that's my point of it feels like because it's such a public space theory that maybe we need to be having more public input as to whether we even want this. I just feel we're jumping to the end solution, which is pick a vendor.
Well, I, I...
I think we need to be at the point of, you know, do we want to do that first?
I, I don't want to argue for something that, you know, that actually the facilities director is more of a, you know, more of a job for me. You know, you're putting something in the parking lot, you're putting stuff on the roof. Now, I have to deal with more things. You know, keeping the schools dry and comfortable and, you know, being able to plow the driveways and plow the parking lots. It's easier for me not to have this. But, you know, we've already taken that to, into consideration, in my opinion. And that's why I went to the Board of Education so much to show them what it was going to do, what the impact was. We didn't get down to the nitty-gritty, but they get it. You know, I think they understood. The Board of Education, you know, talked about it a lot. They have a facilities committee that I brought to probably three or four times. You know, I didn't talk to them about the vendors because that was the Board of Selectmen's choice. I talked to them about the project, what would the carports would sort of look like, what, where they would generally be. Since we didn't pick the vendor and we surely haven't picked an actual construction plan or the documents, how could I really tell them what they look like? I've looked at the, you know, the construction documents. There's some that I like better than the other, but, you know, I don't think we're there yet. This is an RFP, a request for proposals. I thought we were evaluating on the price and can these companies produce? And can they build this carport and can they make it happen for us in a very short time period? So, that's the criteria that, you know, the committee used and reviewed. If you, the Board of Selectmen have other criteria they want to use, I will take...
I, I understand, I understand everything you just said, Billy. I'm not trying to, you know, minimize all the work that you guys have done. I just think as a Board of Selectmen, I learned about this at our previous meeting and, and that there was an RFP that was out and that we are, you know, being asked to select a vendor. I've never been asked to have a conversation or have public input about whether we even want them or not. So, to me, you know, that, that conversation has not happened at the Board of Selectmen.
So, Scott, this is Bruce. I, I wonder if we can't separate, I hear two thoughts in your comments.
Yeah, yeah.
One is the, the project. And then, there's another, more process-oriented thought in your comments about how and when we are talking about initiatives that are around bigger strategic guideposts.
Right.
Right? So, I think we'd all agree that we've got a, a bigger strategic goal of energy efficiency. And we're talking about one of the initiatives. And I think as a, as a process discussion, maybe separate from this project discussion, we talk about a mechanism for these initiatives to get brought up, to get documented so that we get some visibility to them out over the horizon and we can maybe guide them into or out of the CIP. This one seems like it probably went through its proper channels because of the type of project it was. But I, I think, and Scott, you're at risk of agreeing with me here. It would be nice if we could see a bigger picture of, of what we're doing around our energy efficiency and, and have an, an actual list looking out over six to 12 months, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a plan. I mean, I think that, you know, and how that plan then integrates with CIP is dead on, Bruce. I couldn't agree with you more, so...
So, that's on the record now.
Yeah, by this agreement.
So, I, I would propose we kind of separate the two thoughts. If I've accurately framed it for you, Scott, that we've got the project in front of us. And from my perspective, the, going back and getting the RFP fine-tuned is not a commitment to do anything other than to receive those documents back from the suppliers.
I'd like to say, I think the same thing a little differently. I'd like to pursue both fronts.
I, I'm not saying we table one. I'm just saying that we, they're probably better served as separate conversations.
So, I, I think one front is, Tom has, has asked us, suggested last and best. At the same time, I think we need to learn from Billy and our Energy Committee and others, what's our strategy moving forward? What kind of projects will be brought forward over the next time period?
At least in type, if not in actual, I think, you know, Billy's done a good job of explaining there's a, a little bit of opportunism that goes on with these as well. So, you know, the, these opportunities come up and then there's a desire to follow through on them. So, i- if we don't have an exact project, a flavor of what we might see. And then, when there is something specific cooking, you know, we can get, we can get brought up to speed.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with that point, Bruce, that, you know, I think there is a notion of opportunistic here. Yeah, and I, I totally agree with that point, Bruce, that, you know, I think there is a notion of opportunistic here. And I get, I would just ask you out of courtesy so that we don't get put in this position going forward, that if, if an RFP is being created about some sort of a large, you know, structure like this, that we brought it to Luke maybe a little bit earlier in the process so that we can have some of these conversations. And I, and I do want to come back to that point around public input though. That, you know, do we, do we and should we be getting public input on this? I guess I'm, I'm feeling like we should. And it feels a little bit like we're, we're doing something without including the public here. So, what are, what are your guys' thoughts on that?
Public, Planning and Zoning has a, has a public hearing on this, don't they, before it happens? I, you know, Dave was here the other day and I think he said in eight 24. And I think there might be some kind of modification through a special permit. I'm not really sure what actual requirements or permits. But Dave definitely said it would go in front of the planning and zoning. They were talking about what kind of public input they would have. The Board of Education had a bunch of meetings where the public comes. So, there, there was some public input, you know, you could always ask for more.
You don't always get it. We have a town meeting tonight, the only one.
Your thing, the PSC thing might be in May though. I mean, is that almost likely too late at this point too?
Are you asking me a question?
You'll have long shovels in the ground at that point, right?
No, no. Before this, anything happens, why, why did you say May, Scott?
I, I didn't like hearing it. I heard something.
Yeah, and I, I think if the Board of Selectmen is uncomfortable moving forward with the project, I think that they have every right to, you know, slow it down. And, you know, I'm not going to argue with that. If, if you want to ask for other criteria and request more, I, I think you're jeopardizing the project, but that's okay. That's, you know, that's okay with me, as long as it's okay with you.
So, to, to bring it back, Billy brought up some important milestones that we probably should address tonight, at least with regards to this, this ongoing request. So, maybe Billy, you could guide us back through those.
Yes, so, you know, we want to clarify what you're asking, to me, was the dollar amount. You're asking them to revisit their dollar amount and give their final best and anything else they'd like to submit, you'll take it.
So, it's, yeah, it's final and best, whatever, whatever they think is appropriate, whatever that means.
Different proposal for a different facility or whatever.
And then you also need to decide a timeframe. If I'll get ahold of them tomorrow? And, and then you think a week is good enough?
I think so. They've both done a lot of work on this.
So, October, I'm going to say October 1st or October 3rd? What's today?
Today's, next Monday is 30th.
30th. So, you want to say October, you want to say the, I, I think we should give them at least a week. I'll get ahold of them, the 1st, October 1st. And then you guys want to, I'll ask them for four copies for each one of the board members? Oh, there's five.
Billy, what documentation, if we decide to move ahead?
Yeah.
What documentation is involved? Does it involve the Board of Finance?
So, it hasn't in the past. So, the Board of Selectmen would be going into a 20-year agreement for buying energy. You do that all the time. You usually don't do it for 20 years. You've been doing it for three or four. So, I don't believe you've ever gone to the Board of Finance for any of that.
It feels like we should be, maybe it's not a decision made, but should we be seeking their counsel given the complexities of this agreement?
I, I don't have anything against it. I'm trying to understand why. What, what, what do we, what insights are we hoping to get from their, from that request?
It's their, it's their financial brain. You're probably just the financial brain of our bunch here, Bruce. So, I guess I'm looking to get their financial focus and.
Unless, unless, I think unless they're in a position to better predict the future, the, the tables detailing what the potential return is, they're a function of the, of the assumptions you make going in. The, the assumptions that we've been presented feel pretty reasonable. They're not overly pessimistic, they're not overly optimistic. So, so, and then that's just pretty much straight math after that.
Well, since they are the Board of Finance and since they ostensibly had some financial expertise, Bruce, I'm, I'm not suggesting we should ask them for their approval. But I certainly wouldn't mind hearing their reaction to this in a consultative fashion. It is a 20-year commitment. And I guess we, to my mind, maybe we've been negligent in the past in not asking them to at least offer their opinions on this.
It just seems like an opportunity to collaborate with them too. I mean, here's, here's, you know, two, you know, different pillars of our government could be collaborating together to ensure that we're making the right decision for the town.
I think that's our responsibility to make the right decision for the town. I don't think we, I don't think we need to collaborate with the Board of Finance. And I don't mean to be dismissive. But I think we're, I think we're, we're complicating something that we've been doing for a long time.
Just because we've been doing it for a long time doesn't mean it's right either, Tom. I'm focused on that. I mean, I hear your point with it.
Well, you know, we can go round and round on this. I have a motion on the floor in a second. The motion is to ask them for their last best response. I'm going to call the vote.
In a week? We want to call it a week?
So, you want to put the details in? That'll be 2:00 on the 1st of October. I'll get ample copies for you guys so you'll come in at the end of the day and get them. Because they're so big that to scan them and emailing them would be difficult. We could try to do that, but that might be tough. I'll get them to the Selectmen's office that day. You guys will have five copies. You'll each have a copy. And then you review it. And then do we, you want to meet with them and, or you want to get back to me on that after you review?
Yeah, once, once we review it and then we can, we can decide if we need to meet.
Okay.
So, our vote tonight would be just to take the next process step. We're not awarding anything.
Right.
We're just taking the next step.
That's right. And you leave it on the table for, when's your next meeting? That'll be?
The 15th at 8:30.
It's not on the 8th?
No, it's the.
No.
On the next evening meeting?
The, no, what happened?
Yeah, that's.
The 8th is, is, the 7th is a Monday. No, it's.
Yes.
So, October, what'd you say?
No, I'm sorry.
It's October 15th. It's a Tuesday because Monday is Columbus Day. The second Monday would be the 14th, but it's a holiday, so we do it Tuesday morning.
Right. So, we started on.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, got me all screwed up.
I did that on purpose. Sorry.
The 1st is not a Monday.
I, I know. I know that now. Thank you for pointing it out.
October 15th. So, we have to tell them that, you know, we want to make a reasonable timeframe. So, you're going to make a decision on that day. And we'll tell them that, you'll make a decision by the 15th. Because that's going to be interesting on how we're going to then, you know, get the project approved, permitted, P and Z. You know, I think, you know, I think it's going to be very difficult if not.
Well, should we step up and have a special meeting after we receive the responses?
I'm concerned about the timeframe, that is for sure.
Right.
Because I, we have a long, you know, this is an RFP. This isn't construction documents. And, you know, we have a lot to work between, once you make the selection and then once I go through the details of the construction. Maybe we could hire colliers to help us or something, try to move it and expedite it. I'm just thinking out loud.
Well, we've got a whole week where we can call a special meeting.
Let's get to this back there.
In planning and zoning, I mean, they're, they're.
They meet once a month, right?
Twice a month, but the, one's planning meeting. So, they're, the last meeting of the month is when they would actually, would be the soonest that they would bring it, so.
I don't think they've heard about it at all. So, if they haven't heard about it and you guys thought knew about it, it's going to be interesting on how fast it'll act.
I think they have heard about it because that's why Dave was on our committee.
Yes, well, yeah. Because I wanted him to be on the team.
So, they could probably get it on that last meeting.
Once again, not, nothing's impossible, but it's very tight.
Right. Okay.
All that being said.
Well, I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. Then I am going to motion that I would like to consult with the Board of Finance on this. So, let's take your motion on the table.
Motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nobody's opposed.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll back that motion now. I think that's a smart move.
I hear a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking how to word it. I would like to consult with the Board of Finance about this kind of arrangement as we go forward. We haven't done it in the past, but I don't see any reason not to consult with them now and at least get their opinion. I don't want to mess with the charter. I'm not asking them to approve something that isn't in their bailiwick. But I'm, I'm interested in their expertise and hearing from them. So, I, I would like to refer this in a consultative fashion to the Board of Finance.
I'll back that.
Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll say again, what, so if we kind of play this through and they say, yeah, we think it's a good idea, then we're big happy family and everything's great. If they say no, what do we do with that?
Or if they say they want more information.
Or if they say, you haven't given us enough, enough time to, to understand this.
Right, right. Which actually, which is, which is probably, they do not like when they say no. They like when they say, what, give us, give us some more time, give us more information.
But we're not asking for their permission anyway. So, we can give them all the information they want over a course of time. It doesn't have to stop our, our progress.
True, true. I, I have no quarrel sharing everything with them. In fact, it's already all public, right?
Definitely.
So, so, if any of them had interest in it, they.
Where did it come from, actually? Just where, where would I find?
The first Selectmen's office. And it's also in my office. We'll talk after, okay?
Okay. Thanks.
It's public in the first Selectmen's office. Since July 12th, August 12th, they came in. Any other discussion? Steve?
No, I just, I'm just uncertain as to what, we're going to consult with them. What are they going to?
I don't know. That's why I want to consult with them. I want to see if there are any issues that they might raise that we haven't thought of.
How about if I get the RFPs that we've already received to the board members? You want me to send them to the Board of Education? I mean, the Board of Selectmen? I think we, the existing ones we have, we could do that. And then the smaller amount will probably be the additional stuff they bring in, not the whole packet that they already sent. And I could send them.
What's the next Board of Finance meeting you guys know?
It's Wednesday night.
Yeah, so I mean, is there a possibility of getting it on their agenda?
I have to have it by noon tomorrow.
That's how you can.
Well, we have the existing ones.
That's how somebody reached out to Jeanie.
I already sent her an email.
You're the past. And I.
I'm just going to go on the record saying I'm going to vote against this because I don't think we need to add one more layer of this. You know, we can advise them of what's going on, what we're doing. But I, I think, and I'm just, I'm just telling you where I'm coming from.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ready?
Right.
Okay.
Do you think we should send them the stuff out?
I'd be happy to. I'll send it to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance. And I'll suggest if they have any comments, they can send them to myself or Tom.
With the result of the vote, I couldn't hear it.
It went down.
Oh, okay.
Okay, number 11. Discussing, taking action to approve the appointment of Frank Borasio to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire January 1st, 2020.
Second.
They could be there very long. You won't be there very long.
See, oh, he's filling a position, right?
Oh.
Hopefully he'll, he'll stay.
It's, it's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tax abatements and refunds and the amount of the figure in this. I thought it was 17,885.55. That's the prior. This is the, this is this one.
What's the?
That's the running total.
Oh, sorry. 17,885.55.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13, public comment.
Oh, wait, that's where we need to talk. Go, I want to hear you about that.
Warren Hartman, Squires wrote, earlier, I appreciate you guys doing a lot of discussion on the solar part of the meeting. I, I had a question. Somebody had mentioned gray areas before the RFP and didn't really elaborate on that. And I was hoping that that was going to come out a little bit.
Yeah, no, there were no gray, it wasn't that there were gray areas in the RFP. It was that we got two responses. And I'm just repeating what I said before because normally we don't talk during this part. We got two responses. And then they each started to perk them up a little bit to try to make them better. And I said that's inappropriate. So, that's why I didn't want to keep going with that.
Wait, what was inappropriate? Asking the Board of Finance to get involved? I mean, is that what, I'm, I'm sure.
We, this is not, we don't have a competition. This is public.
Oh, I was going to say who I am.
Right, but you can't ask me questions.
I'm not, okay. I won't ask questions.
But we can talk afterwards.
But can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I think that it's fair that you would bring in Board of Finance. I'm just saying, I, I'm just butting in. I think it's fair. Oh, Rachel Salvo lived here like 28 years.